And are you able to see us?
Yes.
They're able to see us?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
All right. I think we have everyone here, Jay.
Okay, thanks Hannah. This is the regular meeting for the Monroe Planning Commission of Monday, August fourteenth. We'll call the meeting to order. Hannah, would you take role?
I would love to. Commissioners present and establishing a forum. Commissioners Blair, Bull, Dawkins, Lewis, Lockhart, Nugent, and Walker.
Fantastic. Thanks for joining us virtually, Commissioners. Okay. First item of business, public comments. We allow members of the audience to speak on any issue related to the city of Monroe. Comments by individuals are limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody in person or in the waiting room, Hannah?
We do not.
Okay. We have minutes from our last, most recent prior meeting, July twenty-fourth. Melanie?
I move that we approve the meetings from the July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Second, please. Kelsey? Did you second, Kelsey? Thank you. Commissioners?
I second that.
Thank you. Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thanks, everyone. Next item is new business for the evening. We have twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-nine Capital Facilities Plan update. We have Public Works Director Jaka Roberts with us this evening.
So Chairman Bull, it's Planning Director Turtle O. I'm going to give a brief introduction before I turn it over to Jaka this evening. And this is just a refresher of what your role is. And I apologize for last year because I had forgotten. I've got basically a brand-new planning commission, which is exciting, but also challenging because you don't know what your role is yet. And so when it comes to this particular amendment process, we do it every year. And this is not adding new projects to any of our capital facility plans. It is literally reviewing the capital improvement plan, which is the six-year financing plan for projects that have already been through the review process and are in our twenty-year comprehensive plan. So the task is really making sure that the projects on this list match what we have adopted in twenty-fifteen or as they've been amended. So I just wanted to set the stage for the conversation, but please feel free to ask questions. It is also the Planning Commission's role to hold the public hearing, take public input, and then you will make a recommendation to the city council. And as a reminder, for comprehensive plans under the Growth Management Act, you can only amend the comprehensive plan once a year, except when you are amending your capital facilities plan. So this is actually the second round of amendments this year. The first one was to modify our capital facilities element and plans to incorporate the recently updated Snohomish School District and Monroe School District capital facility plans. So now we're on to the city's project list. And again, this is the six-year physically constrained capital improvement plan, which is a component of the capital facilities element. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Jaka, who is going to run you through the project list.
Thank you.
And any questions before we start? Okay.
Good. Done? Cool. Thank you, Kate. Good evening, Commissioners. To my left, so that'd be skier's left, chairlift right, I think, is Ben Swanson, the Capital Project Manager for Parks Department. And to my right over here is John Landy. He's our Water and Sewer Operations Manager. They will also be co-presenting tonight, so we'll be passing it back and forth between us. So good evening, everybody. I might share screen real quick here and we'll get into that mode. And I think, is that working? Cool. We're up on the screen, look at us. Okay, so as Kate introduced the topic, here it is, the Capital Facilities Plan update for twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-nine. And feel free to stop me if I get on a roll and I'm going too fast or somebody has a question about something. I appreciate the interruption from time to time. So Imagine Monroe kind of guides our capital facilities plan as the city's sort of vision statement, as it were. I don't think that's formally what it's called, but that's really what it functions as. It includes the tenants that are kind of on the screen here, the healthy, natural, and built environment, regional connections, making sure Monroe is a lively center, developing community-centered infrastructure, and then a safe place for all. So this is kind of present throughout the plan, as you will see. The framework for the capital facility plan, the regulatory framework, as Kate kind of already went over it, the Washington State Growth Management Act requires the city to adopt a comprehensive plan, which was last done in twenty-fifteen. We are currently in an update cycle, so that is underway right now, which I'm sure the Commissioners are very well aware. And then also, Chapter twenty-two of the municipal code has development regulations in it. And when the cost of the fees, like park impact fees or traffic impact fees, or the cost of the utilities that are associated with these projects goes up, so too do development fees. And so that's why that's that kind of nexus between those two there in the code and then the Growth Management Act. So goals and policies detailed in the twenty-fifteen comprehensive plan. The capital facilities is Chapter eight, and they are bulleted on the screen here. They're, you know, improving coordination between service sectors, supporting residential and commercial infill, building out infrastructure development to support economic objectives, maintaining our level of service standards for utilities and also streets and also parks, coordinating with regional agencies when possible, and then addressing our natural resources and supporting our transportation needs, including trails and walkability and our sustainability goals. So then you kind of look at the way these two things interface, capital being the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan. Within that, then we get down to a lower level of detail, although still not very granular at this point. The transportation plan, which deals with obviously our transportation system, but also active transportation, so bikes, pedestrians, things like that, make sure people on the electric scooters, whatever it may be. Our utilities plan, so we have one for water, one for sewer, and one for stormwater. And then also our parks and rec open space plan. Pass it over to Ben for this next slide.
So in twenty-twenty-two, we recently adopted our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. And what that is, is it's actually an appendices to the comp plan and mirrors Chapter seven of the comprehensive plan, which is your parks chapter. And what we're required to do as a city in order to maintain our ability for grant funding through the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office is we have to update this every six years. And so at that time, that's when we update our twenty-year project list to go on to our six-year capital improvement list. And so this was just recently adopted in twenty-twenty-two, which fit in nicely for the Imagine Monroe. So you can see the vision in the Park Recreation and Open Space Plan very much reflects the vision statement for the city. And so that was developed, I think, right around, it was adopted in twenty-twenty-two. I think twenty-twenty-one was kind of the big year. We really included a lot of components and outreach to all members of the community. And I think it was probably our first plan that kind of established us doing a much better job at our outreach and including everyone in it. So from that, that's where we developed the six-year capital facilities plan that you'll see. With this pros plan, they did something a little different. It's not wrong, but they actually developed our six-year CIP within the pros plan. So a lot of what you'll see is just a cut and paste from our adopted plan.
Good?
Good.
Okay. So here's the process for updating the plan, kind of the development process that we go through. So the mayor begins by developing a recommended budget. And in this case, in a biennial budget, the mayor is developing a budget adjustment essentially this year. So it's kind of a miniature budget, if you will. And then we are here in this step right now. We're talking with you, the Planning Commission. In two weeks, Mr. Landy and Mr. Swanson, maybe, will be back likely for the public hearing portion. I'll be on vacation, so tonight will be one night only for me. So we'll be seeing you guys again there. And at that point in time, that'll be the moment where we will solicit public comment. So the next step after that would be the council committee review. So that would be the P-three committee. And you'll kind of see underneath there in parentheses, each step either has, it's either a local preference of the city or it may be a state law or it may be a local code that requires each one of these steps. So kind of going down through there, the council does some things to adopt or amend or adjust the budget. And then concurrently, that happens with the capital facilities plan, which then gets passed back to Commerce. And we've done, completed the update from a, I think, legislative process or point at that time. So our twenty-twenty-four project summary, thirty-nine projects, starting in pre-design or, you know, in-design or construction right now. So we've got a couple of projects going on in town right now. You may have noticed, I think, most recently finished was Powell Street, which is a great one. Really impressed with the way that turned out. And then we've got the close outside. So something that doesn't get talked about often when a project is done is the, I don't know, year to eighteen months after a capital project is completed, there's an administrative series of events that have to happen in order to close that out, return contractors' bonds, release liens. So that's actually quite a bit of administrative work that occurs that Public Works and Parks have to handle after the project. So when it's built, it's not done. It's not done for another year to year and a half, depending on the way the project goes after that, not fully closed out. So as we said before, the projects listed in the CFP are consistent with the comprehensive plan appendices, those transportation, the utilities, parks, recreation, and open space. Capital expenditures by fund there on the screen, ranging from six-hundred thousand dollars all the way up to thirteen million and change, kind of looking at the utilities, and then the general fund there is the bottom three. And we move it back to parks. Ben?
So for this year, we have some continued, one of our big issues that we had, especially, it took the city a long time to recover from the recession. And that's because parks is all funded out of general fund. It, you know, struggles to get money, as do many of the other police departments, also out of the general fund, community developments out of the general fund, all of your roads are out of the general fund. And so it's a pretty limited pot of money. And so we've had our playgrounds, the playground equipment actually, has been in need of replacement for quite some time. And so now that the funds have been rolling in over these past few years, we've set up, pretty much programmed in a playground replacement per year that, in all likelihood, will be funded. You'll notice some of the things within the, you'll see some very, very big ticket items in the six-year capital facilities plan for the Parks area. A lot of those things are dependent on a bond that the city will go out in the future. If you, the fields over at Lake Ty, that was roughly a little over a four-million-dollar project. It took the city probably twelve years to get that project done, and that was through just piecing together money. And so some of those bigger ticket items you'll see out in the future, that will be a future bond-funded item. But we do have some things coming up in the near future. We're still working for the Cadman site. That's the picture up in your top right-hand corner. The actual acquisition of that, my acquisition is, we had an agreement years and years ago with them where they would transfer the land to us. However, there's a lot of attorneys involved in that, and attorneys cost money. So we're going through that process with that right now. We're working on the acquisition of the Public Plaza Festival Lot in the downtown area. So we're taking a look at that. We are just kicking off for the planning portion of things, our Trail Systems Master Plan. And so you should be seeing invite coming out here fairly soon for an open house with that in September. And then also with kind of the growth spurts that Monroe goes through, kind of that Frylands area being a big one. The good news is, is all the infrastructure was built at one time. The bad news is that all needs to be replaced at one time. And so you'll see a lot of trails that need to be replaced over there, including playgrounds, parking lots, those kind of things. And so we're going through and just really trying to assess those and see what we can do with some of the money that we get through.
Is it gas tax? That we get like thirty, thirty thousand every?
Yeah, about that.
Yeah, so we do get some money, roads and then trails also get some of that money from the gas tax. So we can do some minor repairs, but there's some big sections that do require some pretty significant work.
John, next one? Sounds good. All right, I'll turn it over to John. John, you're going to talk about some of our capital projects.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioner. This first one, crosswalk safety improvements on the Frylands Boulevard, we're looking at improving some pedestrian safety in that area. This project funded mostly by TIB grants. Again, these are flashing beacons that identify pedestrians and allow those areas of crossing and traffic to be safer. The next project, the Dickinson Utility Replacement Project. This was identified in our two thousand and fifteen utility system plan as an efficiency for localized stormwater ponding. We're taking advantage of an aging AC water main in that area. And then we'll be finished with the overlay of the road. This particular overlay then would not be funded by TBD funds, but would be completed and funded by the water and storm utilities. The municipal campus. We're moved out here, essentially, in fact, we were just talking beforehand, this is our last official business in this building. But we'll be beginning construction in two thousand and twenty-four. It's a thirteen-million-dollar project, a couple, or a one-point-two-million-dollar, million-dollar grant in funds with a no-tax increase. This project was part of the two thousand and eight campus master plan. And it has a hundred percent EV accessibility, lead, silver, sustainable building, updates while plumbing each back electrical, including the addition of emergency power equipment, and increased parking and EV charging grid. And the annual TBD road maintenance, the city has a system where we rate our roads. The TBD is a voter-approved, sales tax is point oh-two percent for funding of these projects. Blueberry Lane and Frylands Boulevard, near one forty-six, will be the target for these paving projects in two thousand and twenty-four. Any questions on those projects or any others?
Not at this time. Okay, so kind of bringing it home from Imagine Monroe, we have the mayor's budget at the beginning. We go to see the boards and commissions and talk about the update to the CFP. Hence the reason why we're here tonight. We collect public input, that'll occur in a couple of weeks. Council will go through a process of adoption. They may amend or may change it along the way. That's council's prerogative. The comprehensive plan then is eventually amended, and we get to go out and do the part that we all like to do, which is, I mean, it's nice being here with you, but really, we like to build stuff. It's Public Works, design, construct, and deliver projects. And then eventually, the O and M team takes over, maintains the improvement for hopefully fifty to sixty years. And then we start back at the beginning again with a new image of Monroe. That closes out the presentation. And I guess it's back to Commissioner Bull, if there's any questions.
Okay, Commissioners, you have any thoughts? Kelsey?
Thank you for your presentation. So the Powell Street one is done. Is there no plans for any like? Anything? It's just dirt on the side of the road? Are they adding any greenery to that?
I believe that, I don't know the answer to that, actually. I, my guess is it's going to be grass, if I was just to take a stab at it. But I'll look into it and I'll send you guys an email, I'll get back to you.
Anything else, Kelsey?
Actually, wait, me sorry. Yeah, I was just wondering if those are implemented into the plans of like, when we do these updates, are we adding like beautification or like trees and things like that? And there's also no crosswalk added on those stop signs. I don't know where we're supposed to do those, but there's, yeah, I'm just wondering if that, I didn't look.
So I guess it sounds like you might be asking kind of two questions if I was to say them back to you. The first one is, is greenery included in capital improvement plans and projects? Answer is yes. We have some codes around what the streetscape needs to look like. And that's why I don't want to get back to you until I actually have an answer on the question about Powell Street. I'm not quite sure. I thought that was done, done, but I need to look into it. So yes, we do have codes around that design dependencies. So sometimes it'll be grass, sometimes like Madison Street, there'll be street trees, and the neighborhood wanted more concrete on one side and a little bit more of the street trees around the other side. So there's a variation and mixture, if you will. As far as crosswalks go, we actually have a crosswalk striping policy that we follow, and that area right there did not qualify as one that would get a crosswalk. I know that people don't necessarily love to hear this all the time. Every intersection is actually a crosswalk from a legal standpoint. So that's, that didn't qualify for striping.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jake?
And I'm sorry, I've got a few that I'm totally fine with, just really brief descriptions. And first off, I wanted to say the project that was done with the new street standards off Lewis Street, I can't remember which one it was, if it was Sam Street. It looks amazing. I don't know if you guys know the one I'm talking about, but I'm looking forward to those standards being applied elsewhere. But I just said a question about, since the Transportation Benefit District is coming up for a vote, is the road maintenance line the only one that relies on the Transportation Benefit District funds?
Oh, I got it. Okay. So no, we use Transportation Benefit District funds and we incorporate them into capital projects. So Madison Street, for example, which just got done, I guess it would have been last year it got finished. Anyway, that had Transportation Benefit District funds in it, and that's what actually paid for that top amount of asphalt. So we combine it with other capital projects at times, and then we also use it for road maintenance. So for example, this year, we're using some of that funding up in the farm to overlay several of the roads up in that neighborhood. It was time for those. And then I believe we also are using it for, off the top of my head, I don't know which. It's one of the other projects that we're doing this year. We're using some of the road maintenance funds for that. So it works, it does both, it commingles.
Awesome. Yeah. Okay, wonderful. And then, is it kind of safe to assume that a lot of the projects that have funding in twenty-twenty-four, that funding is secured? So for instance, is the municipal campus funding for the police station design, construction? Are some of those, I guess, line items already funded?
So the answer is, if it's in twenty-twenty-four, yes, it's funded. If it's in an out years, for example, I think that project specifically, there are some components of it that get into further out years. At this time, no, those funds have not been secured. So much like some of the road projects that are on there, the railroad crossing overlays or railroad grade separation projects, things like that. We search for grant dollars or other mechanisms the council will have to look at in order to fund those in the future. But they do need to be identified on the plan, because in most applications, the city can't apply for a grant unless it has that project named on the plan in advance and approved by the council. So it's not everything that's on the plan is funded when you start looking at the general fund and street side. The utilities are fully funded, if that makes sense, because they're separate businesses, they're able to do things a little differently.
Yeah, that is great. Thank you. The Event Plaza or the Festival Lot downtown, has that location already been selected? Is that where the Union Bank used to be?
So they're looking into it right now. Deborah Knight's actually the one that's leading the charge on that. And so, so yeah, they're reviewing, viewing a couple of parcels down there, and it's kind of, I guess, in process.
Okay, awesome. What is traffic calming? What goes into that?
Well, we have a traffic calming program. It's actually a link on our website that you can go to to take a look at it. It's part policy program. The council has adopted a policy that says, here are the things that you can do in traffic calming in Monroe, and they chose to fund it, I believe, in twenty-twenty-one, maybe twenty, maybe most recently. And so traffic calming is the attempt to change the road, the road design and/or roadway feedback signs or roadway feedback markings in order to slow people down in a specific area.
All this problem there, you guys are amazing. Thank you. Ben, sorry, go ahead.
Jake, it would, Jake, it would be like the bump outs you see on one fifty-fourth if you drive there. They're trying to slow folks down to keep them at twenty-five. Isn't that right, Jaka?
That is correct, yes. That's a physical means of traffic calming.
Awesome. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Melanie?
Yeah, um, what, can you remind me? I think we may have been told this before, but if we were, then it's escaping me. But can you remind what the train reduced noise area project entails?
So the train reduced noise area project, at this point in time, we have secured grant funding to work at the Kelsey Street Crossing. So you may remember, and maybe four years ago now, maybe three, that larger curb got installed there. If you go through there at all, it's in, and Blueberry, the way the Blueberry intersection function changed. So that happened. Right now, we are waiting on Burlington Northern Railroad to install the remainder of the required safety devices in order to make that a voluntary non-train horn area. So while the train reduced noise area is in fact something that the city wants, it is also not required that trains not blare their horn. So there's a likelihood that they won't do it as much, but it's not a guarantee. It's not to say that they couldn't.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, everyone.
So if you give them just a few minutes, they're probably going to leave the room unless they want to stay and talk about equity tonight.
Good. So the only thing I had on my note that I can get back to is the vegetation on Powell.
Yes.
I was just trying to keep it.
And that vegetation may be better suited to a fall planting than a middle-of-the-ninety-degree-weather planting. I noticed that the new building, the Lakeview Building, they put some trees in, and I do not think they adequately sprinkled it. And so those new trees that they put there are pretty close to being dead.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's why we do maintenance bond requirements. They have to survive up to two years before we release a bond.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. See you in two weeks. Thank you, Jaka.
Thank you.
Okay. You want me to start, start going, Jay?
Yep, that'd be great, Kate. We got all of us, right? There's Commissioner Blair, so we're great.
Yep. We are all here tonight. So this is a continuation. We've started this conversation back in June. We met again at our last meeting in July. And this, what I'm hoping to accomplish this evening is to come to a consensus on a definition for equity. And so in your agenda packs, or agenda bills, excuse me, the very top are the two new definitions. And I do want to give a shout out to Brandy. She assisted me in doing, coming up with this based on the feedback from last, our last meeting. There was a lot of questions, comments, and so I think she did a great job capturing everything we covered. Below that are all of the definitions that we have previously looked at. And then the second area that we were having conversation were, what should the screening questions be when we're looking at the comprehensive plan, goals, policies, and determining if we are meeting our equity definition? And are we consistent with Imagine Monroe? Then walking through, and then after that, again, I formatted it so that where we landed, the preferred list of questions are at the top. And then again, I included everything that you've already reviewed at our previous meetings. And then just walking through the packet, I know a lot of questions came up about, why are we doing this? And so in addition to the email I sent out after our last meeting, I did include the table that tells you, was it an amendment to the Growth Management Act? Was it part of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision twenty-fifty, which again is our multi-county planning policies that we have to comply with? And then the third category is if there was a change with the Snohomish County countywide planning policies. Again, GMA, multi-county, Snohomish County, and then us. And then after the comprehensive plan, it's actually our development standards, which are primarily Title twenty-two for land use. Then continuing in the packet is the equity report. Again, we just had a brief conversation of what this includes. I am still working with our consultant team. I, as I mentioned at our last meeting, there's a lot of things that I would like to see included in this. There's a few items that I'd like to see changed. So I'm hoping we might be able to have that by your next meeting this month, but more likely it will be in September. And then at the back of that, report includes comments on. comments on how do our housing policies, which is really specific to why we're having this equity conversation this evening, how, how our policies rate based on the initial set of questions that Mig put them through? And then I think that is everything in your packet. So where I'd really like us to focus at this point in time is the second page of your agenda bill and the new definitions. So I'm happy to read them, or if you've had a chance to read them. Did we capture what you were hoping we would in our definition of equity?
Janelle?
Hello, can everyone hear me? Good, okay. So I was not at the last meeting. So just to clarify, Kate, I'm looking at new alternatives resulting from the July 24th. Oh, burn it. You just started sharing it. Go off.
Oh, do you need that page? Hold on, we'll go back.
No, well, no, I was like trying to split screen. I'm not tech savvy. It was, so it was, it was two, the two definitions at the top. Is that what Brandy, what you're referring to when you say that Brandy helped you get that together?
Yes, that is correct. And that is based on all of the questions and comment and conversation at our last meeting, which really took us through everything below that previously provided examples. So this was, this is where we landed after the conversation.
Okay, awesome. So someone who is getting her master's in this field, those definitions are spot on. I really don't understand in this day and age why anyone would question why we need, you know, to have policies strictly geared towards equity. But those definitions were amazing, great job. And so I'm, I'm completely on board with those. They were, they were spot on. They were spot on. And I think it's important for us to have a clear-cut, concise definition where there's no wiggle room, where people understand what we stand for, and they understand what, you know, what we're expecting. So and what, and what honestly, what it's our duty as a city to provide to, you know, those groups. So, great job. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I just want to say, Brandy, as always, thank you very much for the extracurricular work that you regularly. I have a question, again, all of this being so new, has there been an example of the city facilitates access to representation and decision-making processes? Like, how, how does that play out usually? The city's facilitation part?
Right, so I'm still working on research for you. I did the question out to our city attorney about your comments that concern that were raised about the implement. His specific response, there are communities that have been doing this before us, and it, what it starts showing up in, on a land use side specifically is one, actually for Public Works, they will create a matrices, and each aspect, when you're reviewing a project, will go through and you'll get points for every component. Is it on the 20-year plan? Is it helping meet housing requirements? And they actually do have a couple of equity questions in there. Is this the older part of the community? Does it have a higher proportion of minorities? And so the city of Shoreline, I've reached out to them because I actually liked their example, and it's pretty self-explanatory. So I'm working on that. The bigger question I, I think I'm hearing really relates to policy. And so the, the city as a whole, with the city council making decisions, because after, after tonight, if we do come to consensus, I've been asked to take this to, what is the housing group? CHSAB. It's going to CHSAB next, and then it will ultimately go to the city council. They need to buy off on what is appropriate for Monroe. So then it, then the next step is, as we're going through the comp plan, all of the policies that we have that influence our land use development standards, how are we meeting it? So did that answer your question? I don't have legal input for you, but that's kind of how the process will work.
Yeah, thank you very much for the explanation, and also thank you for your follow-up email last week. My question was more about the city facilitates access to decision-making, just because I'm thinking about like, the Planning Commission city council setup, does that kind of alter that process proactively? I just, I didn't know if you'd seen an example of that from a city or a county yet.
I'll have to go digging for you. As I've mentioned multiple times, this is still new to me as well. But luckily, we, we're not the first ones to be tackling this. There are some other cities out there. So I'll see what I can find for you.
But Kate, once we get this definition set, this is basically our roadmap. This is what guides us in our entire comprehensive plan update, correct? To ensure equity throughout the planning process?
It is a piece of it. So if you go through the attachment that gives you all the regulations, the pieces that equity is very specifically outlined by the state has to do with the housing element. And then when they adopted, she was looking at it, the climate change this year, they included specific requirements for public outreach. I feel like I'm forgetting one. So it's the biggest piece that this is extremely important is housing. That was made clear in 2021 with House Bill 1220, and then public outreach. And then there's, there's several pieces in Vision 2050, but it is a piece. So you've got Vision, or Imagine Monroe, that is our locally adopted, that's what we're trying to achieve. That's our visionary statement, and equity is a component, not only from the city, but the state perspective.
Thank you. Melanie?
Yeah, so in looking at the two definitions here, if, if I'm understanding right, the only difference is about halfway through, option B specifies, it says the, and to facilitate access to resources, opportunities, and representation in planning and decision-making processes. So those, the in planning and decision-making processes is specific in B, but that's the only thing missing from A, correct?
Yeah, sorry, just to butt in, but yeah, it was like highlighted in the original document, but it didn't come through on this. So I just did the same thing. I read through it to try to find that, that change, and that's, that is literally the only thing. The other thing where influence is in parentheses, I didn't know if both those words were used in some of the other definitions. And so I didn't know if you guys wanted one word over the other, or if you were fine leaving power and influence in parentheses like it is. But yeah, the only difference is on line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Line starts on line 5, goes into line 6 on part B, and it adds "and representation in planning and decision-making processes."
All right, so further than, than I, I like option B, and I, I'm a fan of leaving the power with influence in parentheses. Because I think it, I mean, both can be used interchangeably in a way, but it also just offers that tiny bit of clarification for anybody who may have further questions on it. But I like, I like option B, and amazing job on putting all the thoughts into one statement. I think this is great.
Thanks, Melanie. Just, just to note, the word planning is also included in the next sentence as well, land use planning. Just to note that. Jake?
And Jay, Brandy has a question when you get there.
Oh, sorry, didn't see your hand.
Brandy can go first.
Thanks, Jake.
I wanted to just go back to what Jake had brought up about the facilitate access to resources. So when I was rereading everything, and what I understood the intent of that, and how I was trying to place it in here, an example of that is the outreach that we're doing for the comprehensive plan right now, where we're trying to get community involvement to be sure that all voices are being heard with the planning, and then looking back and saying, okay, who all showed up to that most recent event? Did we get enough of the different voices we're looking for? Or do we need to continue to take more active, active proactive steps to ensure that more voices are being heard? So that's what I think that the responsibility and the, as far as like a legal aspect, I think it's mainly just a policy to try to ensure that we're doing outreach and listening actively to the data and the people that we're hearing from.
Awesome. Thank you very much. That helps. It was more, I guess, my, my question was more about the formality of the decision-making question, but that, that explanation is helpful. I, I was going to say the word power in that sentence, I think it might be unnecessary, just because of the connotation, almost kind of negative connotation, that I don't know if we want to incorporate in the city definitions. Influence, if it's going to be kind of the example, or sorry, like, as you said, Melanie, the, the explanation for the use of the word, it might be able to stand on its own feet. Whereas like the, the use of the word power is just kind of, I don't, I don't know. I, I hope you understand the the thing that I'm trying to say.
Jake, you, you would say, or you could edit that to remove the word power and just include the word influence without parentheses?
Right.
Janelle, do you have thoughts?
Yes, there we go. You can hear me, right?
Yep.
So just in response to, excuse me, the power word. The word power is used because that's realistically why we need equity. Because certain people have power that historically marginalized groups don't. So that's, that's a part of what equity is. So I don't really think that, for me, being a black person, the word power doesn't hold any negative connotation when I read this statement, because, I mean, I'm a part of a historically marginalized population, right? So when I look at that, I look at like, whoa, okay, all right, city of Monroe, you know, they really have equitable practices. Now, perhaps if I was the party that was holding the power, I may think that that's a negative connotation, speaking, you know, like talking about me, I would take it maybe personally, but at the end of the day, it's, it's honestly sad that we even have to have something like this, but it's very necessary. It's very necessary because there's, there's a lot of history behind it. And so I personally think power is an accurate description of what we're talking about right here. Equity is the fair distribution of opportunities, power, influence, and resources to meet the needs of all people. So that's just my two cents on that. Thank you.
Melanie?
I apologize, there's a toddler crying in the background now. He was not when I raised my hand. But I, I would echo that. I believe power is necessary when it comes to equity. And I, I just think that if there's people who take issue with that word being there, then I would personally ask that they maybe check their privilege, but that's just my, my stance on that. So I would, I would prefer to leave power in there.
Jake?
Commissioner Lewis, could you explain what it would mean for the city to, to give people, to facilitate them to use power? Can you kind of explain the, the function of what that means in this definition?
The function of the city to give people power?
Yeah, like the, the connotation of the word power in this case, what does it mean for like a municipality to facilitate power?
Well, in this particular statement, this equity statement, that we're needing to have this statement as kind of a ground, like a, like a framework, right? For those groups that are historically marginalized, the city per se is not passing out power. But due to years and years of, and not just for, not just for African Americans. I mean, for any minority, any, like, this is, this is based on gender, like race, socioeconomic class. Like what we're saying is, what is equity? What is equity? And equity is the fair distribution of that power, and it doesn't, it doesn't mean that city of Monroe is passing out power. What it means is that in our society, historically, historically, like, like long time ago, like it's been going on, that's how society is going. We need to have a statement like this so that it doesn't continue, so that they know what we stand on as a city. That's why you have an equity statement.
Jay?
Jake? Still? Oh, Brandy?
Yeah, I was going to point out that there were some definitions that said the city will. What this definition is literally just like defining what equity is. So if you do reread from the beginning, we're just defining what equity is. It's, it's not saying the city is going to ensure that everybody has equal power. The city will ensure, it doesn't say that. The only time it really talks about what this, what is like which institutions will proactively adopt policies, that, that would be a responsibility of the city, is to proactively adopt cities or policies and take genuine actions to eliminate inequitable adverse impacts. But besides that, that first sentence does not state that the city will be doing, have the responsibility for that. It's just a definition.
Thanks, Brandy. So the definition, the definition ends where it's, where that new sentence is equity shall be incorporated into all aspects. That's the action portion after the definition?
I believe so. I believe that's, that's where it, I mean, the second sentence is very long. So if you read back, yeah, the definition of equity is the principle. That's a pretty long sentence, and it does say the institutions will have some responsibility to make sure that all voices are being heard. But yeah, this, the way this was written, it was not like some of the other examples that was very much only the city saying, the city will. That's, I'm just trying to point that out. It's kind of supposed to be a high-level definition that we refer back to when we're saying, does this meet our equity standard?
Thank you for the clarification. Jake, did you have something?
Yeah, and it was kind of to big, sorry, to piggyback off of what you said, where the, the part at the end where we talk about should be incorporated into all land use and planning. And Brandy, I'm, I'm in no way criticizing the, the definition that you guys came up with. I, I think it's awesome, and it did a really good job kind of combining all of our previous comments. But I was just thinking, because power and influence are kind of interchangeable, just going off of what we've been talking about, I think if, if you are to say power needs to be incorporated into all land use and planning, that just kind of has a weird negative connotation, I think. Like if I was going to say, I'm giving this one group power, that would just seem odd coming from a municipality. And so if influence could work in the same spot, I just, I think it might be a better, a better place for the word in that situation, because it Because it could totally relate to what Brandy was talking about earlier, where you mentioned stakeholders being at community meetings to discuss different projects. But to say that the city is facilitating power is just, it's, I think it might be off-putting to a lot of residents. And just to see it kind of in government text is, is a little odd.
Janelle?
You're on mute.
I told y'all I'm not tech-savvy. So Commissioner Walker, when you just plugged in the word "power", I just, just to clarify, because you kind of pulled out a piece of the definition. So if we were to put what equity is in place right there, it would sound legit. So we would say, "the fair distribution of opportunities, power, influence, and resources to meet the needs of all people regardless of age, ability, gender, income, education, culture, race, or background, shall be incorporated to all aspects of land use planning to ensure everyone has access to the services, opportunities, and activities to satisfy their essential needs, advance their well-being, and contribute toward a high quality of life." So "power" is just a piece of it, like that, that's just a piece of the definition. The complete definition, you have to go from start to finish, is gonna be the fair distribution of that power. So you know, just, just, just think about, you know, just kind of think about that. And then I would also challenge you to maybe think about the groups that unfortunately are, they fall victim to inequitable practices. But we're not here for all that, but I just wanted to point that out.
So Jake, I'm gonna call on you, but before we call on you, would the definition be easier for you to read if it read, "equity is the fair distribution of power, parentheses, influence, opportunities, and resources"?
I, I'm just really simply saying, and Janelle, thank you for reading it out. And I totally understand and appreciate this definition. I think it's great. I just think if influence, the word "influence" is the only thing I'm talking about right now, suffices, it serves the same purpose. The term "power" versus "influence" has a sort of different kind of functional connotation. So government doesn't really say, "I'm giving, I'm giving power to this one person," right? It's a fair distribution of influence, that makes sense. Stakeholders from all parties be at the table. But to say that the city is gonna facilitate power, that's my, that's literally the only thing that I am recommending, is that maybe we strike through "power" and leave it at "influence." And yeah.
Can I interject?
Thanks, Kate.
Just two meetings ago, the request was to include the word "influence" specifically. Power, I don't remember being part of the conversation, but I could be misremembering. I do specifically remember "influence" was requested as part of the definition. The other thing that I would say is if we come to an impasse, if you like option B best, the other, the other option is you say you like this, but there is a difference of opinion on "power, influence, and send it along in the process if we cannot come to agreement tonight." I know Brandy's got hopefully better guidance than I do, but it's an option for you to consider.
Thanks, Brandy.
I was gonna say, I know that both, you know, Melanie and Janelle said what they thought of the current... I mean, everyone says so far that sounds good, this "power" word, it sounds like we're at an impasse. Could we, could we go around and say what everybody wants to do? Keep it or move on so that we're not having the same conversation over and over?
Thank you.
I wanna keep it, if I wanna get started, if I start.
Thanks, Brandy. Liz?
I'm fine with keeping it.
Kelsey? I'm sorry, we're...
Cut out. Use silent.
Are you, can you unmute, Kelsey?
I did. Am I here now?
Yep.
Sorry, same problem. Okay, so I, good job, Brandy. This is an awesome way to combine everything. I think that the in-planning and decision-making process is repetitive, so I would go with A, just because we have it in the last sentence. The use of planning, but I was not like... I also vote to "power," because we are distributing to everyone. Like that's the whole point that all of this, this section of the comp plan is...
You cut out again?
We're still not hearing.
Okay, sorry about that. So I vote to keep "power" in because we are distributing, like this is for equity. So that everybody has the same opportunity. Right, everyone the same opportunity to be, you know, their highest self. So I vote to keep that in, but I also vote for A because I think that planning is repetitive because it's in the last sentence. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So who else would like to jump in?
This is Janelle. I vote to keep "power."
Can we go back?
I'm sorry, can we go back and get a, the A versus B as well? That would be helpful.
Sorry, really quick, the only reason that I did add it to B was to be very clear because if someone did chop up each sentence and only read the one sentence at a time, to try to avoid some of the concerns about what the purpose of the equity and facilitating the access, since this is the one that has to do with the kind of the city institution responsibility, that's what my thought was of adding that to be very clear that that's what we're talking about. And there's nowhere else that it talks about decision-making processes except for right there.
That, Brandy, that's a great point. So, but I think we could strike "planning" from B. Because it's, it's in the next sentence. I will also jump in on the first sentence if I could. So I don't have a problem at all with the word "power", but the definition is weird with another word in parentheses, so...
Just a comma.
So it could be, "opportunity comma, power comma, influence," or "strike influence." Don't like a word in parentheses in the definition unless it's a parentheses for an acronym or something. Melanie?
I'm fine with adding a comma. And then to be clear, on B, Jay, are you saying to just take out the word "planning" after "land use" so that it just says, "equity shall be incorporated to all aspects of land use to ensure everyone has access to the services?"
No, ma'am. I'm thinking, so where it says, "resources, opportunities, and representation" in the decision-making process. I would just strike the word "planning" right there because you have, we definitely want it in that last sentence where it says, "equity shall be incorporated into all aspects of land use planning." That's basically what we're trying to accomplish. So that needs to have the word "planning." I'm just saying, if we say in the sentence above, "opportunities and representation in the decision-making process," that's a sentence you can use for all types of city-type business.
Got it. I'm, I'm fine with that. I like, I do like definition B. And if you're just talking about taking planning away in the one spot and leaving the decision-making processes, then I'm, I'm cool with that. It's my vote. And leave "power" and then comma, "influence," I'm, I'm fine with that too. I'm fine with either one with the thing. I just think "power" needs to stay. And I like the "influence" being there too. But I suppose putting a comma for more flow works just fine.
Thank you. Janelle?
There we go. Can you hear me? Yes, I'm unmuted. I was confused. I didn't see that first "planning," but yes, to your, to your comment, Chair Bull, I would definitely remove that first "planning" because we do definitely need it down in after "equity shall be incorporated," that sentence. And then I would go with B. And I also, because I don't like the parentheses either, so I would probably put a comma there as well. But yeah, so I'm with B. And yeah.
Liz?
I would agree with "power comma, influence," and then on B with the suggested edit of removing the "planning," suggested, Chair Bull. I agree with that.
Thanks, Liz. I see, Brandy, I see your raise on the other hand. I'm sorry, we're wearing out your arms, but go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to say that my only concern with removing representation and planning from that would be that just leaving decision-making processes, the whole part before the decision-making is the planning where the voice is really important to be heard, to be sure that we're facilitating access to that. I added the full thing for the, I don't think that it's redundant because it's saying, "we're gonna ensure that we're getting all voices heard during the planning and decision-making process." And in any decision-making that has to do with land use, it will be, equity will be thought of. They're actually two separate things. So even if there isn't an opportunity for, for someone to be able to make comment or to take a survey, we still have the responsibility to ensure equity is in all land use planning. So I feel like removing the "in-planning" does sort of change the structure and then it just sounds like that we have to be sure we're listening to voices during decision-making processes. And you could extrapolate out that planning would become first before a decision is made, but I'd say either remove the whole thing or else I'd go back with A or it's in there for a reason.
Thanks, Brandy. Who is next? Kelsey? Go ahead, Kelsey. Still on mute. Can't hear. Still can't hear.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Thank you for the clarification, Brandy. That makes sense. We don't want to chop it up, so I also will go with B and a comma.
Okay. Had a hand up? Janelle, did you have your hand up? Yeah, no? Okay. Jake?
I was just gonna say, reading it in consideration of the comma and talking about kind of eliminating redundancies, that was, that was more the reason why I was talking about the "power" idea just because the parentheses being "influence," I thought we were saying "power" means "influence." So when you talk about kind of picking and choosing a word that you use, kind of like in leadership or dominance, that kind of idea. If dominance means leadership, I think it'd be odd for the government or a government to use kind of a tone or a word that could have a negative tone. And that's why I was thinking, if by "power" we mean "influence," it's the same thing. When it comes to equal or fair distribution of power, if we mean "influence" or "in-power," totally agree with it completely. I was just thinking, if by "power" we mean "influence," it might have a safer tone just because of, last week I was talking about the potential exposures of kind of the legality of some of the decisions that we were about to make, especially with the idea of kind of boutique law firms becoming more and more common. And because since we're going to be referencing this definition so much throughout the comprehensive plan, I just want to make sure that some of the words we're using, especially being that we're gonna go with such a long definition, obviously, we're going to kind of take a decision, read through the definition and go, okay, it meets this line. And so when I was talking about the idea of the word "power," I just was thinking that the functionality of the government facilitating power to something versus saying everyone has a fair distribution of influence, I thought that that's a better tone. But obviously, I'm one of seven, so I, I'm not saying it has to be struck through. That's just my opinion on the, on the potential tonality of it and the way that it'll be read. But I am, I'm for A.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Brandy?
I will say, you are, yeah, you know, Jake, you are on to something. I think I did originally put "influence" in the parentheses because I wanted to ask if, if they did need to be two separate words or if one could be interchanged with the other. So it sounds like they threw it out for discussion, even though, and it sounds like a lot of people want to keep the, keep them both and we'll just remove the parentheses.
Melanie?
Just to further clarify, since we've gone back and forth a little bit more too on the whether or not to strike "planning," I will just clarify, I'm for B with a comma after "power, influence." And then that's, I'm fine leaving with Brandy's clarification. Leave the "planning." I don't care if it's said two or three times. We, that's what we do is "planning." So yeah, I know it, it kind of goes back and forth, but just to clarify for Kate, I'm fine with leaving "planning" in there.
Thanks, Melanie. And that, that would be, I would agree with Commissioner Lockhart. That's exactly what she said is fine with me. And I do appreciate all the work that Brandy and Kate have put into this. So, and Brandy, thank you for your constant defending each word in each sentence. That's very helpful for the rationale and reasoning for this whole thing. So definitely appreciate that you put that much thought and work into it.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe where we are landing, then the majority is to go with B, remove the parenths around "influence," add commas instead, and retain the rest of the definition that includes "in-planning and decision-making" as originally written. Is that correct? Can I get a hands up for those? Okay. All right. Thank you. Yay, we did it. It's not easy. All right, you ready for the next? Oh, Melanie has a comment.
Melanie?
I just have a question because Kate, you said that this will go to SAB next. If they were to, if they were to encourage changes or suggest changes, would it have to come back through us or would those get made and then move to council? What's the process there?
So based on what I understand I am being tasked to do is take this to the next committee as an introduction. And if they want to make changes, all of that information is given to the full council. I will not be making more strike-throughs. I will just be basically capturing the comments and then it will go to council.
Thank you.
Okay, part B. Does anyone need a break? Um, the second part of our conversation, finalizing, uh, the screening questions begins on page seventeen, near the bottom. And where we landed after our meeting, our last meeting, is the group, uh, that were available for the meeting last time, where you liked the questions that were provided by Government Alliance on Race and Equity, and they had a two-part process, and that, excuse me, uh, is listed out as is. And then again, like the definition, I've included all of the other questions that I had provided for your consideration in the previous two meetings. So again, I'm looking for, are you still good with this? And this was primarily, um, Janelle, Janelle was not available. So just making sure we're still happy with this, um, list of questions to use as screens as we go through all of the policies in the comp plan.
So, Kate, we're looking at six steps, and then four following questions in the bullet points. That's what we're looking at right now.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Kelsey? Can't, can't hear.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I think Redmond did a pretty good job at making things concise and like an easy yes or no. Um, and then also British Columbia, right? We're talking about picking some more follow-up questions. That, or are we using all these?
Uh, no, so where, what I, yeah, what I had understood after our last meeting is the commission did not want to make a final decision because Janelle was not available. And so, uh, what I'm bringing to you is where you all landed on your preferred group of questions. But I'm also providing the other list that we had looked at before I was given the guidance that, uh, for the commissioners who were present, that Government Alliance on Race and Equity was the preferred screening questions for our, um, to move forward.
Yep. Thanks, Kate.
So, Kelsey? You're not muted, but we can't hear you. I don't, connection. Dang it.
I like Redmond, Redmond's follow-up questions. And British Columbia.
Okay, we heard that.
Yes.
Concise and like it being a yes or no, and then how do we go from there? Um, where these other ones, there could be a lot more nuances on the sentences. I think they need to be kind of like concise and shorter like that, where it's like, okay, how does this fit in here? Where do we go from here? If it's a no, then how do we get there? And not just because they're short. I think they did a good job at, at that, so.
Brandy?
Um, I do see that the, those, uh, the Government Alliance ones, this seems like there's a lot, but when you do count them up, there's ten. And, you know, Redmond has six, and the Mig ones that they came up with us, um, they look like they only have five, but they have actually double questions in some of them, so there's like seven or eight. Um, the stuff that the Redmond and the British Columbia one doesn't have a lot, or have at all, which I find is really important, is, um, what's the data? And, um, what community, communities have been engaged, and are there more opportunities to engage, uh, more people? I feel like, um, it looks like a lot, but this one really digs into the, it's not just yes or no, like checkbox, like, yeah, we, we've definitely screened for equity, like, these seem like they would actually give us good results, and that we would be taking a look at the, the full. If we're gonna do it, we should do it, um, like genuine, like the, like our equity statement saying, make doing genuine actions. These questions feel like you get genuine, um, review of the situation instead of maybe just some look, who will benefit, who, who was maybe excluded, what contributes to the exclusion? Um, those to me just don't feel like enough. So I'm sticking with the Government Alliance questions.
Great. Thank you, Brandy. Um, I think Janelle was first, possibly, yeah?
Okay, so, um, since I wasn't here last time, this is all like, well, when I looked it up before the meeting, um, I do like the Government Alliance on Race and Equity questions, and Kirkland has some there, too, that I like as well. Um, you know, I, sometimes short and brief. You know, it may, it may seem like it's direct and to the point, but when you have questions like, you know, when you have something like, do Kirkland's policies, planning processes, and engagement activities help build community capacity to help inform actions and decisions? That's gonna get people to thinking, and that's gonna open up that dialogue, right? And so I think that it's important um, to have those questions that we can build off of those and have that dialogue. So I do like, um, I do like a couple from Kirkland, but yeah, the ones from, um, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity are spot-on as well. So I'm with those, too.
Thanks. Melanie?
Um, I still, uh, prefer the Government Alliance on Race and Equity because, um, the, some of the other, um, other op, options, uh, do, are like yes or no questions. And I just kind of feel that if you've got people who maybe don't value this work, or don't put this as a huge, uh, priority in their own values, um, would be able to default to just yes on some of those to go through, whereas if you're asking the specific, like, what is your proposal and the desired results and outcomes? You can't just say, yes, it's working. You have to actually have that conversation. So that's what I really like about it, so that you're not just able to default to, yes, we've done this work. And so, yes, the answer is yes, and let's move on. You have to have the conversation. You have to answer the questions. Um, to talk about the, like, critically think when you're answering the questions. So, um, I still prefer that one.
Okay, thanks, Melanie. Any other thoughts, commissioners? Liz?
Well, I do like, I mean, uh, the Alliance of Questions, I do like, like Redmond asks, the last one, well, this policy, well, project first correction, to be handled if unintended consequences are identified. I mean, just as we run into that issue, you know, I think that one's important to be considered. Um, and I don't recall seeing that one in the Alliance questions. Um, and I think that one is important. I mean, I realize that there's always a way of correcting through making changes, but it's not an easy one. So I think asking that question, and I, I think it, I think that's an important question to ask on just the added thought process on if there is an unintended consequence, because we all know we need to, that needs to be a thought process, but I think understanding what it looks like, if that is what is remind, reminding people what the process is, if that does happen. It's not an easy process. I don't know. I think that's important, that commissioners are reminded every time we're going through these processes. It reinforces all the steps that we have to go through. So I think that one question is important. Um, so.
So Liz, if you look at the second bullet point from, um, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, so you go through the six steps, but the second bullet, bullet point, what are the potential unintended consequences? And then it goes through, uh, ways. Might be able to modify it.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, yeah, I guess we can modify that one. I just, I guess since it's worded differently, but.
Okay. Jake?
I'm sorry, I, I was, uh, when I was reading the packet this weekend, I, I wanted to, I didn't know if Hispanic completely qualified as racial, or if it was just ethnicity. I was looking it up, and it is kind of unclear online. I just wanted to see if anyone had clarification on that.
Yeah, so that, um, you can thank the US Census. Um, I can't remember if it was the 2,000 census that it changed, because, um, it used to be a race, and then it changed to ethnicity, and whoever, um, anyone who remembers this more correctly than I do, please feel free to, um, to add. But my understanding is that if you are Hispanic, that you may, from a race perspective, identify as white, black, or multiracial, or the, the options that were given. And so the US Census made it not a race, it became an ethnicity, which a word I can get messed up on. I believe that is what happened. And so if you look in the data that was provided by Mig, they're giving you both to try to get to that answer, to that question, because it's really important for the city of Monroe, in particular.
So Hispanic or Latino?
Correct.
Thank you. Brandy?
Um, I just want to say, I think it's great that everybody, uh, has been looking at all this so closely, so that they, um, are seeing the things that they like, and want to be sure that, um, our questions are addressed. And to Liz, I do see what you're, what you're talking about. I like where it's talking about the unintended consequences. Um, it, uh, like Jay pointed out, on the bullets, it is on number two, and it's also addressed, um, on step four. Um, who benefits or will be burdened? What are your strategies for mitigating unintended consequences? Um, I feel like with those two things, it seems to me like it addresses that pretty well, and, um, I would recommend we don't change any of the wording on this, because I think it'd be real nice to have a definition that other people also use that we're using.
Thanks, Brandy. I thought I saw another hand. Jake?
Yes, I, I was just gonna ask, so is the, the current set that we're discussing, or discussing, is it ten questions long? And then is the Mig one five questions long in total?
So it's four step, six steps, and then four bullet points. So it comes out to like ten, and the Mig looks like five, because there's five bullet points. But if you actually read it, um, they actually ask like a secondary question under multiple of their questions, so it's about ten as well. Seven, seven to ten, depending on how you count a question.
I, I did want to say the, the Hispanic part, just because of that back and forth on ethnicity or race. Um, in, in Monroe, and in Monroe's history, um, if you take the Blueberry Lane area, for example, there, I think they're one of the best examples that we have locally of a, uh, racial or ethnic group that has been desperately impacted by capital, capital plans, in, in my opinion. Um, now, I've kind of mentioned some of them before, so I don't want to get too redundant, but I always like to go back to the example of the bus stop that's on the, um, corner of Blueberry Lane and, um, Kelsey? Uh, the, the condition of the road of Blueberry Lane, so that always comes to mind as one of the groups that's been most, most affected probably by, um, or investment in capital projects. And so it, one of my concerns is, is just leaving kind of them out, especially considering that they make up, I think it was seventeen or sixty and a half percent of the Monroe population. Um, that's so important to make sure that all of this, uh, relates to, to them as well. Um, and so, yeah, I'd love to get other commissioners' feedback on that.
Jay? I, I don't understand how they're, how, what you're asking for. So, I mean, why would we call out a specific group when the idea is that you're looking to see if all groups have been, if disparity of impact has hit any one group, why would, why would we call out Hispanics? I'm not, I don't, I'm not understand.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Kate.
Yeah, so because Hispanic is no longer in the race group, we were trying to classify, what is the makeup of Monroe? Who could potentially have been left out in processes or public improvement? So if you go to page thirty of your packet, it's, um, Mig is, we're just trying to capture who this community makeup is. And because, again, the US Census changed, I cannot remember if it was twenty, two thousand, two thousand and ten, somewhere in that era, it actually used to ask that question, but it became, it went from race to ethnicity, because they were, they were responding how that community saw themselves. And so we can't just do it based on race anymore. We need to ask both of those questions. And so we're not trying to say, um, this, this particular group that is different than this group. We're just trying to figure out who all lives in Monroe, and why that becomes important in, in the future, is like, if you're looking at a, um, my example again was Shoreline, which I really want to get, um, there. They do points, again, to try to do, figure out, if you're looking at two projects and they're absolutely identical, but you've got one area that has a higher proportion of minorities, that, that actually does get a higher grade, because you're trying to make up for past practices. So how does that relate to these, the, the steps and the questions? I don't think it does. I think it was a generic question on who's in our community, if I understood Jake correctly.
Yeah, I, I can clarify for sure. So, um, if, if I understood the points of the, the question correctly, it is about, I, I guess, kind of making sure that, um, racially or, or marginalized communities, historically marginalized communities are, I'm sorry, I keep getting lost. There's so many pages in the packet. I mean, I, I can just go generally while I'm looking, but making sure that they are, um, or they benefit and aren't burdened by these proposals as well, being that they make up three thousand, um, three thousand of our population. And in my opinion, they, they are a historically marginalized community, especially in Monroe. Um, who, I mean, as, as well as other, um, marginalized communities, they don't have representation in Monroe's history either. So I want to make sure that because they, they do basically fit that qualification as a historically marginalized community, um, that they're given kind of equal, uh, representation in these questions by us. Um, just because if, if the split between ethnicity and, and racial in the census, if it was more of kind of a paperwork, or, um, I guess, uh, this or that decision, split decision, just because it was such a, such a tough, um, tough gray area, I guess, for, for the Census Bureau to make. Uh, I just wanted us to make sure that we consider that, that our Hispanic community be included in, in kind of that idea, or this general idea of, um, I, I guess, the purpose of the questions.
So Jake, are you, is this all, can it all be summed up in the fact that you just want to add to step four, advancing racial or ethnicity, ethnic equity? Is that what you're saying? I don't.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to, um, explicitly include that word. I was just asking for clarification or thoughts from my fellow commissioners on, um, if that was included in historically marginalized groups as it relates to these questions. That was kind of the clarification that I was seeking. I'm not, not looking to change the words exactly. It was more that when we, oh, sorry. When we apply this criteria in the future, um, that their, that their needs or, or their rights are kind of um, given the same amount of consideration as, um, as others, so. as others. So would love to hear your guys' thoughts on.
Okay. Melanie?
Yeah, I was gonna make the same comment, kind of pertaining to what Jay said about Jake's comments. And I see that there's racial equity in four, and then it says, and then the first bullet point under the following questions also says, how will the proposal increase or decrease racial equity? So is specifically saying racial equity going to accidentally or unintentionally, unintentionally exclude our Hispanic population? Because that's now an ethnicity rather than a race based on the census. Because I would want to make sure that we're all encompassing there and not unintentionally excluding just based on things. So if we need to add a word, like what Jay said, just to make sure that we're including both there. Because I don't, I don't want to unintentionally leave that out. That's, it is a huge population in Monroe and should be considered anywhere, whether it's a big or a small population in any city, I would argue that for any location anywhere, that we need to make sure that we're including all of that and all that language.
So that goes to number two with data, good data would include that census type material, which would be Hispanic or Latino as an ethnic group. Brandy?
So this is partially why we started with the definition of equity. And if you look here, Government Alliance on Race and Equity. So these questions and these steps aren't, there's no work here that makes me think that this is now just all of a sudden about race. I mean, this is then, then if we're gonna start adding the words to the definition, then we get back to the idea we're gonna accidentally leave some group out, right? So we define equity, that's all people, all genders, all races, all abilities, you know. And then these questions are what you ask of every decision, and you don't have to then spell back out that you're talking about all people. I mean, that's the point of having the equity definition and that it, the title is Race and Equity. And then also here, it even says on number four that we're talking about says, let's see, have all communities been, or that's three, have all communities been engaged? And then another one, oh, four, it does say, what are your strategies for advancing racial equity or mitigating unintended consequences? That's unintended consequences for any of the groups that we're talking about. I mean, if we have to then start, if we feel like somehow we're going to miss the Hispanic population in Monroe, because that's really, I'm confused on how we're getting back to that, because we just have a definition that we're trying to umbrella everything. And then now somehow, how would we forget to look at all people? These questions are not specific to race. I don't see that.
Kate?
If I might interject, I think I get it now. What we're getting at is because Hispanic and Latino are considered an ethnicity under the US Census, and the data is where we begin. I believe to solve the situation is just add racial and ethnic equality to number four.
But then we're forgetting about, then we're forgetting about people with disabilities and low income. I mean, now we're making this only about race and ethnicity. And that's not what, that's not what the definition or what equity was about that we started with.
Okay, I'm gonna disagree with you on that one, Brandy, because if we're, if we're talking about census data, and we're trying to determine our, the makeup of our city, it's a long racial and ethnic lines is how we're figuring out who is currently disadvantaged based on homeownership, cost burden, all that kind of thing. Right? That's the data we're looking at.
That's accurate, but we have more data, though. I mean, we have education, we have disability, we have income level, all of these things that we need to be addressing.
You're now taking equity and then leaving out some other people to try to, yeah, this, I'm not sure how we got here.
Would it, would it help if we removed the word racial? If we're trying to ensure equity for all? Jake, you have your hand up?
Yeah, and that was kind of the basis of my question. Again, I was reading through the data this weekend, and I guess some of my concerns about some Monroe's disadvantaged groups, some of the MIG data, it felt like reaffirm kind of the observation of it. And Brandy, I'm talking about it because adding or making these terms more specific, and also I want to just go back a second to the idea that the longer we make these questions and the more subjective we make these questions, we do get further and further down the trail of picking specifically what what groups, what parts of that equity definition we are meaning to address with that question. And so, yeah, if we say racial equity before, which again is great, I think it would be wise to go racial-ethnic equity. Racial is already there, so I'm not suggesting that we're adding subgroups. I'm just saying that if we all kind of consider that Hispanic is racial, ethnic, it is a racial, ethnic subgroup, and they definitely do meet Monroe's data's marginalized communities. I don't see how that is a bad idea, or how it makes these questions way more pointed than they already are. I would love to hear your guys' feedback. I'm kind of confused on how they shouldn't be. I mean, the census regularly uses racial-ethnicity. So that's my only suggestion. Otherwise, if the purpose of these questions are meant to help disadvantaged groups or marginalized groups, ethnicity should be included as well.
Thanks, Jake. Melanie?
I actually like the idea of removing racial, because then how will the proposal increase or decrease equity? We have defined equity to include all those definitions. So then you're not leaving it out. So if you remove racial, because I think, I think what's happening in the holdup here is it's too, it's, this is one of those places where it's maybe too specific. And while I'm not going to sit here and think that anybody down the road is going to forget about the Hispanic community in Monroe with, in terms of thinking about this stuff, and when you look at the word racial, what could get under, like, what could be forgotten unintentionally is people with disabilities, et cetera. And so that is defined in equity. So if we just say with number four, what are your strategies for advancing equity or mitigating unintended consequences? We have the definition of equity, same thing down with that first bullet point. Take out the racial for proposal to increase or decrease equity. And then you've got your definition to revert back to, and we cover that in our definition.
If it helps, I 100% support that, because we also have the data, which is question number two, what's the data? We have what you're looking for, the groups that may have been marginalized, our minorities, it's not just race and ethnicity, it's income, it's education, it's disability, we have that. So you know who makes up the community, who's living in Monroe. So we know the populations that planning needs to be doing more effort to reach out to. I think if you're all good with that, it works for me. From staff.
Thanks so much, Kate. Jake, I'm gonna get to Jake, I'm sorry, Brandy, and then I'll get to Brandy.
Brandy, you can go ahead.
I was gonna say that I thought that was a really good idea, Jay, and maybe that is the right move, is you take that out, because then we're building on the equity and the definition. So I'm in favor of that. Originally, I didn't think we should make any changes to the question, since it's, then we could say, oh, we're using the same, you know, wording from Government Alliance on Race and Equity, but I do agree with that. That's my vote.
Thank you. Jake?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I just want to say, Melanie, thank you, you summarized my thoughts exactly. That was the point that I was trying to make the whole time and yeah, especially in terms of eliminating redundancy and the definition of equity that I think it is so good in its current form that we created. I think that that is is a really good idea. So thank you for summarizing, Melanie, I appreciate it.
Okay, any other thoughts, commissioners?
Do I have consensus or a majority on this to move forward?
Kate, can you summarize the changes? I'm sorry.
So the only change that we're making to the Government Alliance on Race and Equity is that, number four, we're gonna just move the word racial. And then on the question, number one, again, just to move the word racial, so we're focusing on equity.
Sorry, I thought you cut out, but that, I think that's perfect. Thank you.
Liz says yes. I say yes. Janelle, yes?
Okay. Thank you. This is, it's deep, it's heavy, it's important, and it's new. So I really appreciate you all coming prepared to have this conversation. It's not easy, and I will keep you updated as it moves through the process. I'm finished. Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, let me get to, okay, that's all the old business we have. So we're gonna get on to discussion by commissioners and staff. So I will start, I'm gonna start with Brandy, so she doesn't have to raise her hand.
Thank you. I thought you were gonna start yourself. I was like, that's new. I don't have anything tonight. Thanks, everybody, for the great meeting. See you next time. I did not get the message about getting, about not coming in person. That's why I'm the only one here, so.
Okay, appreciate your efforts, Brandy. Thank you very much. Go with Melanie?
Yes, thank you so much, Kate and staff, for putting these presentations and discussions together for us. Thank you, fellow commissioners, for putting so much thought into it. And thank you to Brandy for helping with that definition. The work tonight is great. This is important work. It's deep work. It's ongoing work, and I just appreciate everything behind it. As for things, I, over the weekend, had the pleasure of being able to go to just outside of city limits, the Renaissance Fair. This is the second weekend. There's one more weekend of it. It was hot. There is there is shade, but only in specific places. But man, it was fun. It's definitely, it's definitely one of those places where, you know, you've got to be into it and go. But whether you dress up or not, it was a good time. There's good entertainment. I'm really excited that it's here in Monroe. I believe that they have contracted to have it here for at least two more years, and then maybe beyond. And I believe they're gonna work with the site owners to make some improvements for future years. But it was really fun, and it brought a lot of people here. So I know some people may have opted to, I mean, a lot of people stayed on site. There's a camping option, so people bring in and don't do anything other than be at the fair. But people also came out and supported the local community, is both Monroe and Snohomish. So I'm personally really excited that it's here. It was really well done. I'm excited to see where it goes in future years. Other than that, I think since two weeks ago, that's one of the only things I've been dealing with, some kids having some heat-related stuff at home. So we've been minimally out and about the last couple of weeks, but we did get to do that. So that was a lot of fun. And yeah, that's all that I have now for me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Kelsey?
Guys, can't you hear me anymore?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, Melanie, do you have a Henna tattoo? Okay, I guess my only news is I saw Kate at the farmer's market, which was great. And their booth was awesome. And the farmer's markets have been really great and fun, and they have a lot of cool stuff there. We probably all know. And I think it's cool what we're doing here and being aggressive about our policies to actively implement change is really cool. Glad we're all doing that together. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Kelsey. Jake?
I haven't gotten up. Thank you guys for the discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jake. Liz?
I just wanted to thank Brandy for all her hard work on the definitions. Greatly appreciate all that. Thank you so much. Thanks, staff, for everything tonight. And thanks, commissioners, for all the feedback. I'm really glad we got Janelle's input. I know we pushed off a lot because we really wanted and valued Janelle's input on this. We weren't gonna do anything without that. So thank you. That was very valuable. And thanks, everybody, for the great conversations tonight. So that's all. Other than there was a lot of traffic for the Renaissance Festival. I know all the hotels in town were booked for that. So that's great. That's great to see. Not great for family visiting that weren't involved with that, but it's all great to see and great to have all the towners come in. So thanks.
Thank you. Jake, did you have something?
I realized I did forget to say something in my comment. Brandy, you are the MVP. We are all so grateful for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Janelle?
All right, I want to piggyback what Commissioner Walker said. Yes, you are the MVP, Brandy, right along with Kate. I appreciate the both of you. Kate, specifically for your patience and your understanding in the importance of this work. It's exciting for me, because this is what I'm studying right now. So I really appreciate the dialogue tonight between the commissioners. I value it and I appreciate it. But yeah, thank you so much. And, you know, it was crazy hot today. I don't know how I used to live in 109 weather, like, it is 80 something degrees, and we're like, oh, my gosh. You know, only in Washington is air conditioning a luxury. Okay, because we don't have it in our house, and it's hot. But I'm glad to be here. Thank you to everyone, and have a good day.
Thanks, Janelle. And I just wanted to also mention to the commissioners, or thank the commissioners for thoughtful civil discussion, so that we could get this thing the way we want it. And everybody got a chance to have inputs and good discussions. Super important when you're on a commission to have everybody have inputs, thoughtfulness, and civility. So thank you very much. So do I need to also MVP Ms. Blair?
No. Yeah.
It's gonna, it's Commissioner Blair, it's gonna make it in a minute, so I have to, I have to say thank you. Also wanted to thank staff, just due to the fact that this is a difficult situation with City Hall moving, trying to wrangle city participants and commissioners. Thankfully, everybody's willing to do whatever it takes, but I know how hard it is trying to figure out technology when there's no technology there, right?
Exactly. They pulled out the AV system. So actually, it was our first opportunity to use the owl, which Uh, actually, it was our first opportunity to use the owl, which we will be doing for the next two years in our temporary home beginning in two weeks.
Okay, I also wanted to mention, I, we haven't met since National Night Out, have we?
Oh, yeah, that was August first, yeah, August first.
Okay, so um, that was a great event, Parks Department folks, Public Works folks there. Um, so that was fantastic. Um, obviously, lots of police and firefighters. My niece. Um, joined the fire department, um, so she was there handing out the little uh pink hats. To all the kids, all the girls and that kind of thing, so that was really cool. Um, Melanie?
You reminded me, I forgot that we had that. I was thinking that we had that before the last meeting, but the last meeting was July. That is like my kid's favorite event of the year, I think, is National Night Out, and they had a really, really good time. We were there almost the entire time and seeing everything, doing the scavenger hunt and getting the, getting the prizes. We brought home so much stuff. And like popcorn from Galaxy Theaters and so much candy. And then, you know, the free pizza when you're there, drinks when you're there, free uh snow cones when you're there. Uh, my kids are still talking about getting to be in the police um car and to talk in the. In the intercom there and to get the lights and sirens going and getting into the fire trucks, so um. Yeah, very, very cool event every single year, so. Great job with the city, but also I know that Rotary Club is uh heavily involved in that, and then obviously the fire department and the police department. So all the people who partner together and sponsor it, and it's just excellent.
Thanks, Melanie. I thought you were gonna raise your hand and chastise me for wanting to uh. Buy Renaissance Fair tickets for next year and scalp them because it's such a hot event that I thought. That's a get rich quick scheme if there ever was one. Kate?
Um, I just have a, I have a, just a few items for you. Um, first off. The farmer's market, actually, the end of June was the end of our official outreach for Phase One of the comp plan. And that was just saying, this is what we're trying to accomplish. If you had a say, how would you do it? The next phase will be the land use scenarios, and we are hoping that those will be out in. Early September, and then we'll be out again in the community, bringing them to another online survey. Um, we coordinated again with the civics uh teacher up at the high school, so we'll have a another event up there. So that's moving along. Uh, we will be at the Belonging event in September. I'm still not sure what we'll have, but we'll be there. And then um I just wanted to let this group know that the VFW has gotten extremely creative and found a partner uh who will be doing an art gallery. So they will actually be able to go into the suite that they were interested in uh downtown. Their business license was just approved, and I believe they're having to do some potential tenant improvements, so they're in for building permits. So I thought you all would be interested since, I forgot his name, um Drew was here and had questions for you several meetings ago.
And so Kate reminded us, is that a conditional use permit?
No, this is the interesting thing about this um land use table. Uh, it was accessory for fraternal organizations. But we weren't sure what they would be fraternal to, and so he was hoping that we could change the code. But because we're in the comp plan process, we're really holding off on individual requests. Until the end of next year, because you're gonna be seeing land use tables coming to you for considering, um, for requested changes as a. A large group, so it it was a dilemma, so he's gonna be accessory to an art gallery.
Interesting, very creative.
Yes.
Kelsey?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So was that the one where they um, where he's only in the building like twice a month?
It, he is, but the art gallery will be there. It's it's a full blown actual art gallery. So the, my, my understanding is they'll be there Monday through Friday or at least five days a week.
Okay, so there's like a section in it that has his booth and people can access it that way?
Correct.
Okay, cool. That's a good way to, I guess, double up on that. I think.
Okay, anything else, Kate?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, Hannah, what do you have for us? Thank you for calling everyone today and wrangling us up.
I don't have anything besides, thank you for your flexibility and your understanding with this situation. Um, and I went to the Ren Fair as well, and it was awesome, so buy your tickets early if you want to go next year. And don't scalp them, Jay. That's all.
I couldn't believe how many people wanted tickets. It's incredible.
Yeah, it's a good time. And just a final reminder, our meeting in two weeks will be at our temporary location. The uh Public Works Building Parks Department off of Village Way. So we'll include a reminder with your next packet.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, so that we make it under our time, I'd like to.
Yeah.
Ask someone to move for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn the meeting at eight fifty seven PM.
Thanks, Melanie. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thanks, Janelle. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye.
See you in a couple of weeks.